If you could stand with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll go right to our public hearing item, which is the introduction of an ordinance regarding wastewater and water user rates. And we'll open the public hearing and start with disclosures.
With staff and some public.
Staff and the public. Staff and I've received a number of the copies of the protest letters.
Staff and public.
Good morning, honorable council members. Cary Dale, Water Utilities Director, here to speak on item number 25. Before I start my presentation, I wanted to introduce Alex Bugby. He's with Corrello Engineers. He works very closely with our staff in creating our rates and doing our cost of service studies. He's available for questions after the presentation as well. Today's action is to introduce three ordinances amending chapter 29, 37, and 13 by establishing wastewater, water user rates, external water provider charges, and city waste service increases. The development of the rates are shown here. We had gone to our budget committee in May and July of this year. We developed a 218 notice as required by law, and that was mailed out in customer utility bills from August 30th to September 20th. Those that were not in the bills were sent to direct mailer on September 28th. The rates were again reviewed at the Utilities Commission on October 15th. The calendar here also shows the public hearing continuing from yesterday's council meeting, and should the rates be improved, they would be effective January 1st of 2020, as well as January 1st of 2021. In conjunction with Corrello Engineers, staff developed a cost of service analysis based on revenue needs, water usage patterns, as well as the capital program, which is the main driver for the rates. This year's cost of service analysis is an update to the more thorough 2017 cost of The utility rates considered the following items: that rates were fair and equitable to all customer classes; that they recovered the cost of providing the service; that they were sufficient to fully fund operating and replacement reserves; that bond covenants were met, and there are adequate revenues to pay for debt; that they anticipate continued flat water use; and that they continue to be smooth and are stable in future years. And when we developed our budget, we also considered the following items in the bullet points at the bottom of the slide here. We had reviewed these at the budget workshop, as well as at the budget adoption earlier this year. This year's notices included a pre-printed protest form, and this is the first time that we have included that form with the notice. It is not unusual for utilities to provide those notices, but the majority of utilities typically do not provide that protest form. As of 3/20 yesterday afternoon, the city clerk's office had received 3,278 protests. I'm sorry, my slide is not updated. I did also want to let you know that that is reflective of approximately 7% of the Oceanside customers, and we polled some other utilities in the area and found that of those that were provided protest forms, in the case of the Fallbrook Public Utilities District, about 9% of those that received those forms sent them back. So we're right in line with what we would expect to receive back. Of those protests that came into the city, staff has been diligent in terms of responding to those customers that had specific concerns. We've returned approximately 80 phone calls, emails, or letters, as well as received and responded to 30 incoming calls regarding the rates. The most common themes that folks have questions or issues with are shown here, that the rates are too high already, and I have a slide that demonstrates where Oceanside lands in terms of comparison to similar agencies. There's also been criticism about the agency not offering a low-income or senior rate, and I provided you with some information yesterday about how the structure of the rates is tiered so that those that are using less water have a lower rate. We're not able to offer a senior rate because that is not acceptable for compliance with Proposition 218. There was also concern that development was not paying their fair share, and by making those phone calls and emails, we were able to clarify that that is not the case. There was also a lot of education of customers in terms of informing them on programs that are available through the utility in order to help save water and lower their bills. And then there was a lot of social media on the rates that influenced people's opinions. The proposed rate increases before you today include a 3% water increase, 2% on sewer, and 5% on city waste services. These are proposed each year on a two-year schedule, with those effective in 2020 and 2021. I do want to note, too, that this increase, these proposed increases, follow a year in 2019, in which no increase was proposed for any of the utilities. And I'll start with water. The city provides all water services 24/7, such as treatment, water production, water conveyance, storage, maintenance of the system, water metering, and billing functions. The city staff that work in this division are extremely dedicated and respond to emergencies at all hours of the day and night. I do want to mention that the development of local supplies in the utility has been a critical component to keep rates stable, and I have a later slide that depicts how the development of local supplies reduces the impacts of future rate increases. The development and diversification of supplies, especially local supplies, also provides reliability to the city. This is a slide depicting what happens with costs or bills that come in from Metropolitan Water District, as well as the Water Authority, our wholesale water providers. Metropolitan sends a bill to the Water Authority. The Water Authority passes that cost through to the city of Oceanside, and then Oceanside passes those costs through to the customers. Those costs are considered pass-throughs, and these are examples of some of the pass-throughs that are included in the proposed rate increases for water. In summary, staff is recommending a 3% increase to the city's internal rates, as well as increases to the San Diego County Water Authority Infrastructure Access Charge, a reduction in the Metropolitan Water District Readiness-to-Serve Charge, and this is due to decreases in costs that were seen due to reductions in water use over time, and then an increase in the San Diego County Water Authority Surcharge. I have a few example bills for single-family residential. This particular slide shows example bill increases for a single-family residential customer using six units of water per month on the left, 11 units of water a month in the middle, and 24 units of water on the right. So from $1.64 to $7, depending on use, and these are just examples. For multifamily residential customers, examples include 98 cents per dwelling unit for someone using 3.5 units to $2.59 for someone using nine units. And staff is also recommending a 3% increase on the fire protection line service. This is a separate charge and flat according to, it's not charged according to the service The slide shows a comparison of where Oceanside's water ranks according to similar agencies in San Diego County. This depicts a single-family residential customer using 11 units of water. It is the fifth-lowest rate in the county and below the regional average of $92. I did go back and look at where we ranked in 2017, and at that time, we were ninth-lowest, but more expensive than Carlsbad, and we've moved a little bit around on the chart. So we're still very competitive in comparison to other agencies. We have a lot of infrastructure projects going on in the utility, and we have a lot of efforts within the group as well to go after alternative funding sources, and I wanted to provide some detail as to some of the grants that have come in recently. On the top are three grants that we know with certainty that we will receive in this fiscal year. We have a state water bond grant for two projects for the recycled water system and Pure Water Oceanside, as well as two grants from the Federal Bureau of Reclamation totaling $8.42 million. Those funding sources have been programmed into the long-term costs and revenues for the utility and factored into today's recommendation. In addition to the three grants shown here, we do have three outstanding applications that are in process, which total over $16 million, and we are awaiting notification from those agencies to see what our grant award may be. On the bottom part of the chart are other programs that help defer some of the costs to users, including the MWD Local Resources Program, which is a rebate program that was just approved by the Metropolitan Board this week. Over a 15-year period, it will rebate $43 million back to the utility on the water bills. We were also accepted to apply for two EPA WIFA loans in the amount of $89 million. That loan money can be issued at a lower cost than a typical bond issuance. We will be working with all of our financial consultants later in the month to put together a funding plan that helps us to best prioritize the funding sources so that we are spending and issuing debt appropriately and at the lowest cost. So this is a slide projecting what rates would be if we were to move forward with all of the local water supply projects, and a scenario in which we did not move forward with those local supply projects. And as I've talked to this group before about local supplies being so important in really reducing our rates, I think this is very indicative of what we've seen with previous local supply projects and those cost savings. So the development of local supplies has historically helped to keep our rates low for the city in comparison to other San Diego water agencies, and you've seen that on one of the prior slides. It reduces the long-term fixed costs associated with imported water purchases. And this slide shows a 10-year period of cumulative rate increases, which are anticipated to be 21% with local water supply projects, and that's the blue line on this graph. Over the same 10-year period, cumulative rate increases without local supply projects are anticipated to be 29%, shown in orange on this graph. So there is a savings of approximately 8% over that 10-year period by continuing forward with Pure Water Oceanside and recycled supplies. This companion chart shows a 10-year look ahead of projected monthly water bills for single-family residential customers using 11 units of water, which was our regional comparison. In blue are projected rates with local supplies. In orange are projected rates without local supplies. This slide depicts our progress towards meeting the 50% local supply goal by 2030. Currently, we have approximately 11% of our supplies provided locally through the mission base in Aquifer, as well as recycled water. After Phase 1, in approximately six years, with implementation of Pure Water Oceanside, as well as a portion of the recycled water system, we anticipate 33% of local supplies will be provided. And after Phase 2 in 2030, over 56% of our supplies will be provided locally. Moving on to wastewater, the city's sewer utility provides all sewer services, including sewer conveyance, pumping, treatment, disposal, as well as billing. As with the water utility, staff works 24/7 to ensure that the wastewater flows in the pipes and does not flow into the beach or into waterways. On an annual basis, the utility treats over 4 billion gallons of wastewater conveyed through 450 miles of pipe and 34 lift stations. And as I mentioned previously, we are excited to be working on several projects which will ultimately beneficially reuse all wastewater in the city. This is a similar graph for single-family residential, this time for wastewater, showing low, medium, and high uses, and the billing cost increases. Here is an example increase for a multifamily residential customer, a master-metered customer, a customer in a manufactured home. And in comparison to our regional wastewater agencies, we are right below the regional average of $5,597. So we're right in the middle. Our goal is to be in the median area with the rate, so I think we're there. The last utility, City Waste Services, pays for street sweeping, landfill maintenance, right-of-way cleanup, risk management associated with the utility, code enforcement to support solid waste. The fee is not associated with the rates paid to waste management, and the primary driver for the rate increase is the stormwater trash mandate. Rates are proposed at an increase of 25 cents to customers on public streets and 23 cents for customers on private streets. So the folks on private streets are not charged the street sweeping component of the rate. I thought this was worth a mention to provide a comparison of where California infrastructure rates. And the American Society of Civil Engineer provides an infrastructure report card on an ongoing basis that assigns a letter grade to each infrastructure category to more effectively communicate the general state of California infrastructure. It looks at capacity, condition, funding, future need, operations, and maintenance, public safety, resilience, as well as innovation. The water grade for the state of California is a C, and the wastewater grade for the state of California is a C+. And although this may not exactly reflect what is going on in the Oceanside utility, it does provide a comparison to where utilities are within the state. Important to note as well about what the rates are paying for, in this year, there will be several miles of pipe that will be replaced in the downtown area. Reservoirs that store water for distribution are being refurbished and retrofitted to ensure that they survive earthquakes. We will be expanding the recycled water treatment system, upgrading the waste electrical system, adding two new wells and a brine optimization project, as well as implementing indirect potable reuse, or Pure Water Oceanside. In the sewer utility, we have a companion project in the downtown area to replace several miles of pipeline. We will be replacing one large sewer lift station, the Oceanside Boulevard Lift Station, decommissioning a wastewater treatment plant and replacing it with a sewer lift station. We have several pipeline capacity upgrade projects, as well as ongoing repair of sewer digesters and upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. And when we look at our rates, a way that we can measure how we're doing in comparison to other agencies in addition to the rate comparison is looking at how many main breaks have we had per 100 miles of pipe. The city of Oceanside has had 1.9 main breaks per 100 miles during the 2018 time period, so we're doing fairly well in comparison to our neighboring agencies in San Diego County. A similar comparison for the sewer system shows that we've had 1.2 sewer overflows per 100 miles of sewer pipe, and we have some neighbors that have quite a large gap between where we're at, so we're doing quite well here as well. The impacts to the utility for the water fund include an additional $531 in increased revenue for fiscal year 20. This is for the period of January through June. It meets the bond coverage of 1.4x, fully funds infrastructure replacement debt, as well as additional increases associated with water commodity and pass-through charges. It funds the reserve set by policy at $6.6 million. In the sewer utility, the rate increase funds an additional $454,000 in sewer revenue, again for the period January to June, meets the bond coverage, fully funds infrastructure debt, and increases associated with chemical and sledge hauling cost increases. It funds the reserve set by policy at $4.5 million. And for city waste services, it provides an additional $100,000 in revenue and allows the utility to operate in the black. Staff's recommendation is shown here, and that concludes my presentation. I'll be available for questions.
Do we have public?
Yes, we do. We have five speakers. Our first speaker is Mitchell Robin, to be followed by Joan Brown, to be followed by Michael Terrera.
Hear me. Mitchell Robin, 2536 Cornwall Street, resident and ratepayer. Your notification to the residents here says that cites Article 13D of the California State Constitution and Prop. 218 Omnibus Implementation Act. Prior to that, you state, "If by the close of public hearing, written protests against the rate increases and pass-through charges are not presented by a majority of property owners or tenants responsible for paying the bills, the city council will be authorized to adopt." Okay, that's a gross misstatement of the actual laws or statutes which you're citing In 53-753 California Government Code, Sub. B, "Each notice shall also include in a conspicuous place thereon a summary of the procedures for the completion, return, tabulation, assessment of ballots required pursuant to subdivision C, including a statement that the assessment shall not be imposed if the ballots submitted in opposition to the assessment exceed the ballots submitted in favor of the assessment. A normal democratic process, not some imaginary supermajority that's unidentified." Sorry for the sarcasm. If you rely on Article 13D, which you cite, in Sub. 2, "If written protests against the proposed fee or charge are presented by a majority of owners of the identified parcels, the agency shall not impose a fee or charge." This is only indicating where you get your protesters, either for or against. It doesn't say of all identified parcels or all potential anything, or it doesn't use the word total. If you go back to 53-753, in Sub. E, Sub. 4, it repeats the same language from before very clearly. "A majority protest exists if the assessment ballots submitted and not withdrawn in opposition to the proposed assessment exceed the assessment ballots submitted and not withdrawn in its favor." So opposition versus favor. Then, Sub. 5, "If there is a majority protest against the imposition of the new assessment, the extension of the existing assessment, or an increase in the existing assessment, the agency shall not impose." So, again, your pamphlet's just a gross misstatement of the actual laws which you're citing yourselves. So with that, I'd say that while you probably fulfilled all the statutory timelines as far as putting this out, it's invalid in that you've misstated the law to everybody concerned. So with that, I'll leave you to it. Thank you.
Is Joan Brown here? No. Michael Terrera, to be followed by Michelle Castellano Keeler, to be followed by Earl Callender.
So just for the record, it's Michael Torassa. I'm a homeowner here in Oceanside, and when I moved here two years ago, my rates for water doubled essentially overnight, which for me was a red flag. So looking into this further over the past two years, I've identified that the current pricing structure for the water rates here in Oceanside disproportionately hurts low-income families and elderly, namely and specifically in the way that we pass along fixed service charges to our customers and consumers. I would think that as a consumer of water, it would be fair and equitable, which is the legal term, to pass along those fixed service charges in a manner that is in parallel and directly correlated with the amount of water actually consumed, rather than arbitrary metrics of dwelling size and unit size. To give you a perfect example of that, a commercial business which has a significant size of the actual meter could be on a shutdown and not actually use any water for that month. Therefore, they're going to pay a much higher rate than the residential family that has water running consistently through that month. Is that fair? And to go back to the point of low-income families and disproportionately hurting them, if we're passing along that cost of ownership, which I'm completely supportive of, but we're passing it along based on consumption rather than those arbitrary metrics, then it's actually going to be passed along in direct correlation with the actual amount of water consumed and on the wear and tear on the pipes and the infrastructure. So thinking about that, Representative Kime, as my district member, we have a number of low-income families and elderly in our district, so I implore you and I encourage you to look into this further. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members.
Michelle Castellano Keeler, Oceanside resident and agricultural operator in South Morrow Hills. Look, I don't like a rate increase as much as the next guy, but if increases are necessary, then we would rather have a financially strong water department and absorb that rate versus maintain a lower rate and potentially have a bankrupt water department. We have been very happy with your current department, and we support their rate increase findings, and we also support developing more local water supplies. And lastly, I would just like to comment, after sitting here for almost six hours last evening, listening to how passionate Oceanside seems to be about keeping agriculture in Oceanside, I would also encourage that there's an agricultural water rate that encourages agriculture to stay in Oceanside and to thrive in Oceanside. Thank you.
Earl Callender?
Earl Callender, Kalusa Drive, Oceanside. I'm also churroing to come before the council and the staff because of Prop. 218. I'm also chagrined to come before the council and the staff because of Prop. 218. There's very little hope felt by a ratepayer that you can overcome these requested increases, which are pretty much on an annual basis, even though they may be quote-unquote "flat" in another particular year. I'm sadder still to see some of the verbiage that the staff puts in their report, especially on page 1, where they're talking about meeting expenses and to meet the inflationary costs associated with operations, chemicals, building, and labor. I don't know, can't tell from the data whether that 3% for internal funds is intended to be that inflationary cost. Staff also says there are no rate increases for 2018. Well, there's a lot of playing around with the numbers here. If you go to 2017, those numbers apply to 2018, 2019. So that's just a word game. Also, we refer to the deferral of both inflationary as well as wholesaler increases that were absorbed rather than passed on to the customer. Who are we fooling? They were paid by ratepayers, taxpayers prior to that flat year. What about inflation and CPI? Inflation is obviously intended to be in this increase. CPI, both of them hover around 2.1%. We have one increase for waste management of 5%. Where's the logic of that? I know you and I, and virtually everybody in the city, do not get CPI and inflationary increases each year. It's virtually unheard of. You may get one or the other. CPI also, by the way, I think you are educated enough to know that CPI covers the purchasing of all items under the index each year. Nobody does that either, to my knowledge. For the 5% increase for solid waste by waste management, typically, from what I can gather from the background, they usually request 3%, 3.5% of their allowable increase under the contract. So where's the rest of that money going that the 5% is being requested now? I assume it's going into the internal funds. What about change of use patterns? Another gentleman mentioned that. In 2016, 17, I know I dropped the 20% as requested by this city and requested by the state, but since then, my rate has doubled. I now pay 44% more than I did before. Business-type, financial records indicate in 2018 that the enterprise funds and business-type activities where water and sewer and wastewater reside are very, very healthy. They have assets worth 28.4 million in water and wastewater.
Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
And 5.8 million in revenues was added last year to the coffers. And yet, we're still asking for more, 2 million more. Finally, what happened to the basic business practices? You cut back usage, you lower the price to increase usage if you want. When the water came back through the rain and snowfall last year, nothing's been rolled back to us. The rate increases stay there, and still we ask for more. I urge you to change these increases.
There are no more speakers, but this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone here that has not submitted their protest, now would be the time to do it. And if there's no other speakers, no one's coming forward to give you a protest, then we will close the public hearing portion of this. And Mr. Mullen, if you could address the speaker's item issue on Prop. 218, and then we'll come to staff.
Right. So the first speaker, I think his name was Mr. Robbins, raised an argument, if I understood him correctly, that somehow this process is suspect because we didn't do a balloting. And the statute that he referenced relates to assessments, not to property-related fees. Water fees under both Prop. 218 and the Omnibus 218 Implementation Act, as well as applicable case law, are property-related fees, and they're subject to a majority protest hearing, not to a balloting.
Thank you. Ms. Dale, would you like to address any of the other comments?
Sure. Honorable Mayor and council members, I'd like Mr. Bugbee to talk about the pricing structure in terms of the fixed service charges and the amount of water consumed, not associated with the dwellage size.
Good morning, everyone. So the way that we set the fixed service charges here in Oceanside, really, we developed those rates to recover what we're deeming as the fixed cost of the utility. So in this case, what we're including within that fixed charge is a small customer service component, which is really the same for each meter size, and that's really just the cost of billing, outreach, kind of what it takes to serve each individual customer. The other component of it that varies by meter size, then, is related to maintaining the capacity within the system that it takes to be able to serve each one of those connections. So whenever somebody comes in and connects to the system, pays their connection fee, the city's on the hook to be able to provide service to that connection, whatever size the meter is. So if it's a 5/8 inch meter, then our system needs to be designed that we can provide them with 20 or 30 gallons per minute. If it's a 1-inch meter, then, you know, that same connection, we need to have a system in place to be able to serve about 100 gallons per minute. So that's why we have that capacity component of the fee. What we're collecting through that portion of the fee here in Oceanside is mostly related to capital costs. So there's some metering costs in there, but then also, most of the debt service costs are collected through that fee because we know that, you know, this system that we have built and put in place, we need to maintain it and have our capital infrastructure there to be able to serve those users. One thing that we do do here to try to account for the different way that different types of customers utilize their meters, so we know that a 1-inch meter at a single-family home is utilized a little bit differently than a 1-inch meter at a commercial business. And that's why we have those differential charges for each of the different types of customers. So we actually look at how users with each meter size from each customer class are utilizing water and, you know, what their kind of true capacity demand is on the system. And we use that to modify those charges, and that's why we have a lower charge for the single-family residential meters. And then it kind of steps up to irrigation, because once we get to those meters, we find that those, based on the customer data and the usage data that we have, we can see that those irrigation meters are using water, you know, more consistently at that maximum rate than a single-family or a multi-family might. I think that should clear it up.
And then I will address Mr. Keller's comments about the solid waste city services different from waste management. It is different than waste management. As you know, the waste management contract came before you in the spring of this year. Per their contract, they request a CPI increase tied to a federal index. This is for internal services related to maintaining the streets, code enforcement, and other internal service charges. I did also want to expand on an ag water rate with Michelle Castellano's comment. We do offer three different ag rates for our customers. The first one is just a commercial ag rate, and that one actually has the highest rate of the three available to customers that do farm. The second rate is called a special agricultural rate, and this is offered through the Water Authority. Unless you have been grandfathered into this water rate and have been using it for a long time, you're no longer, you're not eligible to opt into this rate. By entering into an agreement to buy water at this lower water rate, which is somewhat offset by revenue from the Water Authority, the ocean or the agricultural customers agree to cutbacks during times when the state mandates water conservation. In 2017, we did add an Oceanside agricultural rate to be in alignment with the Water Authority agricultural rate, and it's available to users that may not be grandfathered into the program but still want to take advantage of the lower-cost pricing structure. It still has the requirement to cut back if they're called upon to do so by the state. So there are a couple of different pricing structures available in support of the agritourism goal.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Really quick, what is the difference in the rate between the commercial and the
Are you asking the cost or the structure of it?
Difference in cost.
Okay, I've got that here. So the regular ag commercial is $2.79 per unit, and the Oceanside and the Water Authority ag is $1.83. So it's about a dollar.
Okay. We'll come back to that. So my, first and foremost, this is a lot of information to take in. I know it's worked its way up to this point, and I've reviewed all the documentation up to this point. One of the most important documents to me that I would have liked to review a lot sooner was the cost of service study for years 2020 and 2021. That was not provided to the council or public until November 1st. And I've been scrambling to go through it and review what I can to be able to ask questions on behalf of my constituents to justify the increase in water rates. And so I have a few questions. In that document, which I don't know if my colleagues have had a chance to review, on page 24, do you have that document in front of you? Yeah. Item 3.4, the chart. Pull that up. Under water, we're looking at operating expenditures for 2019 all the way through 2024. And I'm showing a line item of an interfund service charge. On average, each year, it's 4 million bucks. That's underwater, and so we're at 4 million there, and we'll get into what the interfund is. And then on page 43, item Table 5-2, under wastewater, so under the wastewater umbrella, we have close to, I think it averages about $4.6 million a year in interfund. And so when you do the math, you're at 8.5 million dollars on interfund per year, and when you break that down per working hour, that's $4,000 per working hour each hour the city's open. And my concern is we're asking ratepayers to increase rates. And that's a lot of money under that umbrella that I don't understand the methodology behind how that's charged. How are we billing? How are we saying this staff member worked this, and this department financed did this for this department, and we're going to charge this? And how we consolidate and reconcile all that to justify charging 8.5 million dollars a year before asking for a rate increase? So with that being said, if you could please, number one, explain why we didn't get the report, and two, how we can justify 8.5 million dollars a year in the interfund under those two umbrellas, and, you know, how that's factored and came up with.
Councilmember Rodriguez, honorable councilmembers, yeah, I'm happy to address that. The interfund charge charges for general overhead associated with operating the city. There's an administrative directive which spells out how those charges are allocated, not only to the utility, but every department in the city. So it pays for things like finance, it pays for the city attorney's office, it pays for the city council. It is generally an overhead cost, which is typically charged to cities that don't otherwise have those costs contained within their own district. So for instance, a special district would be incurring those costs, but it wouldn't be called an interfund charge. It would just be their finance or their other supporting departments that would support the operation of the utility.
So under this administrative directive, which I would like to see, it spells out the details and the rules under what we're charging and what that equals? Because in my mind, if someone works an hour, or is there an hour, is it equal to what their salary and what those are? Are we charging above and beyond that unit? Like, how is that factored? What's the methodology behind charging 8.5 million dollars in this? Because ratepayers are paying for this.
Right. It's transparent, it's available on the Intranet, and we can get you a copy of that admin directive, but it is very specific in terms of like a percentage based on some of the contracts or the number of personnel in a department. And as I mentioned, it is charged uniformly, not only to the utility, but other departments in the city.
So for January through June, we're looking at about $1.1 million in additional revenue from these rate increases, roughly? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So 531, and then, so what is that? What is the total for a year between all three departments for, I think, let's just look at 19, or 20, sorry. Just roughly, I'm trying to figure out the annual rate increase from everything.
If you want an exact number, we can have Alex work on that, but back of the envelope would be just to double that.
Is it like two-point, is it like double that?
It's a little bit more, it's a, sorry.
It's a little bit more than double because we get more water consumption in the second half of the year. But yeah, it's just about double that.
Okay. That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Okay. Where's my next question? What internal restructuring, consolidations, or optimizations has your department done to cut costs before going back to ratepayers and asking for a rate increase?
Councilmember Rodriguez, that's a very good question. I have a long list to go through for you. In the past nine years since I've been here, we've made tremendous efforts to really optimize the utility and ensure that we are moving forward with stable rates instead of big peaks and valleys in the rates. So we're seeing that as a result of implementing a lot of the measures that I am going to discuss. One of the larger measures is consolidating our wastewater treatment to the San Luis Rey facility that is currently underway, and that project will be breaking ground in We've also put together a plan to optimize the most cost-effective water resources. So we have a priority on how we use those water resources with the lowest-cost water being used first, so that our costs are as low as they can be to our ratepayers. And in addition, we have entered into contracts at our water treatment facility to treat water, sell that water to neighboring agencies, which brings in additional revenue to offset some of our fixed costs. We have participated in reverse auctions, which was a recommendation by the grand jury in 2010. We tried that, that didn't work all that well, but we have tried alternative methods that we hope will save ratepayers' money. Instead of moving forward with reverse auctions as of late, we have piggybacked on state contracts. We have also entered into rebates for sales tax related to drinking water chemical purchases as allowed by California law. We've evaluated energy tariffs, installed solar, clean heat and power, and we're moving towards implementation of more of these. We are contracting a majority of our capital projects versus hiring additional in-house staff. We have conducted process optimization at all four of our treatment facilities in 2013 and have been implementing those process optimization studies since that time. This past August, city council also approved a process optimization contract, so we can build on those studies. We've recently implemented the outsourcing of door- We've recently implemented the outsourcing of door tagging functions for our meter services division. That happened just this past week. It's been very successful, and we'll be monitoring that as it moves forward. We've also implemented quite a few automation projects, including entire replacement of the SCADA system, which is the control system for all of our plants, pump stations, and chemical treatment. We will be implementing automated meter reading in 2020. We produced a web portal where previously we had staff entering data testing results into a database. We now have, um, outside contractors, once they complete a test, go to the web portal, they enter that in. So we don't have the data entry need by in-house staff anymore. We have moved forward with the design and construction of a lead gold facility at the Mission Basin. This saves us water, it saves us energy, and it, uh, so it saves us costs. On other designs, we've redesigned the Oceanside Boulevard lift station so that we are not inefficiently pumping wastewater twice in order to get it to the centralized treatment facility. We've conducted condition assessments of all four treatment plants to prioritize the projects that have the greatest needs, and we'll be moving forward with an update to those condition assessments in this next year. We've also implemented design build as a construction method in, in some cases where it's appropriate instead of the typical design bid build. So those are a few of the things that we have implemented in, in the years I've been here.
Thank you. Seems like, um, several of those items are, we're just now moving into, so we'll be able to see the savings in the, in the future, which is, I fully, I fully support that. My last question, and I know my time's running out, thank you for all that information. When I saw that slide of Oceanside's water rates compared to other cities, the first thing I thought to myself was, I wonder what the median income in those cities are? And I know being Oceanside, we're up and coming, we're growing, housing affordability and housing costs and expenses for utilities is, is really weighing in on a lot of my constituents. And so what efforts can be made to, uh, to help lower-income families, seniors? I, I know you stated some, uh, I don't know if it was Assembly Bill or what have you that, you know, gives some restrictions, but is, is there any workarounds? Is there any creativity that could be done to help the lower, lower-income families in Oceanside? And I know they do it with SDG&E and our seniors.
Councilmember Rodriguez, honorable councilmembers, it's certainly something that has been discussed a lot at the rate hearings in the past, and it's something that's on the radar for the state of California, and there's a, there's an effort moving forward at the state level to assist with this. But here at the city, we have designed the rate structure to be tiered so that the lowest tier does provide a pricing incentive or, um, the pricing structure is set at a lower level so that not only seniors or low-income customers can take advantage of that pricing structure by using less water, but other constituents as well. We do have programs available though in the city that will help customers reduce their bills. One of those is the WaterSmart Portal, which is, is a online tool that works in concert with the billing system and provides customers with information on their water usage as well as suggests rebates that are available based on their water use. The metering infrastructure that will be moving forward in 2020 will also provide a lot of data analytics for people to better manage their use. The Water Authority also offers WaterSmart checkups that are free to customers. There's a turf rebate replacement program that's available, and there are also other rebates for high-efficiency clothes, washers, and toilets. And at the state, the state had developed, um, they had passed a 2015 Low Income Water Rate Assistance Act, and the state board is currently developing a plan to implement that in the state. It comes with quite a few challenges to implement that at the local level. Because it does come with a cost, it is quite burdensome to implement, and we're awaiting to hear from the state how that will be rolled out to all of the agencies in the state of California.
Got it. Just quickly, how does, how is SDG&E able to do a lower-income program and water utilities is not?
Councilmember, water rates are subject to Proposition 218, so they have to be based upon the cost of providing the services, electrical rates or not. To the extent that the city wants to subsidize rates for the low income, it would have to come from non-ratepayer sources. In other words, you can't raise the rates of one class of users to pay the costs associated with another. You'd have to use general fund proceeds or some other legally available funds.
Got it. Last, sorry, guys. Are we able to, up here, you know, what would be the impacts of making the agricultural rate the same across the board for commercial and the Oceanside program? Just for all, all agriculture? At the dollar, what, 83?
So, um, uh, maybe I'll, I'll try to answer that and have Mr. Bugbee add to my answer. The reason that that rate is able to be at a lower rate than the ag commercial is that we're able to justify a reduction based on the nexus to the cutbacks should ag be asked to cut back. So without that agreement for an ag customer to cut back, that, that isn't meeting cost of service principles.
So they would just have to sign an agreement, and then they can have the $1.83 rate?
That's correct. It's available to anyone that is open to that.
Or you, does that, are you, are you guys under that rate or other large?
We are not under that rate. We used to be. We stopped, most commercial agriculture operators no longer go under that rate because what you're saying is, and I'm going to use my own words, so I'm not as professional, we are under that rate, but then when there's a cutback, we have to stop using water. Well, we have to cut back our use.
Well, you don't have to cut back any of your use, but you could get charged.
I wanted to introduce Teresa Gomez. She's a senior management analyst and works with a lot of the agricultural customers in the communities, expert on the ag rate.
I would just say that you don't have to stop using water. What, what happens is that it would be an increased cost.
Correct.
If you exceeded an allocation.
Correct, which we would absolutely exceed our allocation. So at that point, we can no longer afford at the higher rate to irrigate our crop. So we're looking, we're looking for more of a consistent rate.
How do we increase that allocation? What is the, I didn't even know there was an allocation on that, on that, on the, like, I'm on the ag rate for, you know, for property. So if I use too much, it, it cuts off? I, I wasn't aware of that.
Well, what we had discussed, because we discussed it, was that you're, you're set, if we go into cutbacks based on the state, it's based on what they call from DWR down to metropolitan, but it's typically based on a, the last year that we had no cutbacks and no drought or any other actions. Say it was an 8% or a 13% cutback, what we would do is look at your usage at that target year, and you would be cut back 8% of what you used on a monthly period. So if you use that in August, you would be cut back by 8% the following August. We also, though, let you bank your usage. So if you are exceeding it and you're reducing more, that extra, it goes into a bank that you're eventually, at the end of one year, reconciled. And in fact, with the last cutback that we had, no one ended up with any type of excessive rate. They were all credited back.
So what I'm hearing is you guys can, correct me if I'm wrong, you can get on the 1.83 if the state says, hey, you guys got to cut back at that point or whenever it's reconciled, what will their new rate be for the overage? Would it be the 2.83 or, or will it be at, you know, what they're currently paying now?
It's typically, what it would be is two times the Tier 2 rate with MWD. So for instance, where they're paying $1.83, it could be as much as $4 for that that exceeds it. And they are required on that month-to-month to pay that excess, but as I said, it goes into a bank, and then it is refunded at the end or reconciled.
What are you guys paying right now on per?
Two dollars and 70 cents.
This is probably a conversation we need to have.
Yeah, we can talk.
Well, I'm trying to, okay, yeah, it, it looks like it's already set up, so.
And I, I would just like to add, if, when you looked at the study, if you look at Appendix B, there's a, a list of all of the internal service charges, and it includes fleet maintenance, building rent, COC building rent, cashiering, space allocation, building debt service, and fleet replacement funds. So there's a whole, here. Deputy Mayor Feller?
Um, the, I, I discussed with you, I hate percentages because it's, uh, laypeople like to know it's 51 cents more than, uh, you know, 3%. Compounding, um, percentages, I, I just, I prefer the other, but you, you'd have to do what you have to do. You brought up the decommissioning of La Salina and the pump station. Question I had is, is it new pipe running from there to La Salina?
Deputy Mayor Feller, honorable councilmembers, I would like Lindsay Leahy to address that. She's our principal water engineer.
Good morning, Councilman Feller, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Um, so we will be running a new section of pipe from essentially Pacific or La Salina to Mesa Garrison. That's around El Camino and Oceanside Boulevard. At that point, we will be tying into an existing pipeline that we will be repurposing, and that will take the, the flows from that location to the rest of the way to San Luis Rey.
Well, that's all I had on that. I'm in, I think I'm in a daze from last night. I can't seem to find where I wrote. Oh, I'm getting how we, uh, this gentleman over here, I believe, talked about notification and, and how, how that all works. I think it would behoove us in this process to, we, we bill every month, so, you know, three, four months ahead of time, let them know that the bill, the ballot is coming. And, uh, just because, I mean, you, I asked you how many we received in prior years. If we give them a ballot, we, it obviously shows that they want to use it with 3,200 submissions. It's like any election, if somebody doesn't want, um, national elections, not everybody goes out and votes. Same in local elections, they just don't vote if they don't want to. But if we remind them what it is that's coming, um, whatever the, the dollar amount be that, so that they have the opportunity to send that back in or not, I don't think it should, I, I don't think you can, um, you, I don't know, it's, it's implied consent if they don't, um, send the ballot, the protest back in. So I think that's what I'm, I'm, uh, trying to cover here is, I, I think that's one of our, uh, our, uh, hitches in the get along. I'm, I was pleased to see that there were protest letters. I protested. Every one of my daughters with seven children each protested. I can't even imagine what's showering and the, the use and the, um, could, could, how that can affect them, but, um, it's, I, I, and I'd like to see us, um, you know, I don't, I, I, I don't see that I can support any more increases without getting more people involved in, in the process. So I, however you get there, um, I, I, I'm going to support this because I know we have a, a huge, um, we don't have the pipe break a day like many cities do. We, we are very strong on, on maintaining and, and keeping things moving, but I think that, you know, enough might be enough, and if, if we, um, we just have to make sure that we're just, if it's, if it's pennies, it's one thing, but if it's dollars, I think that's a, a different thing. So I'm going to move staff's recommendation.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second, please.
I'll go ahead, and we have two ordinances and a reso. I'll need to title the ordinances. Um, I'm assuming you want to vote. The motion includes both ordinances, so this is the introduction of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 29, establishing wastewater user rate increases, and an introduction of an ordinance of the City of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 37, establishing water user rate and external water provider charge increases.
Motion approved, 4-0.
And with that, we will adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting at 3:30 on Wednesday, November 20th.
Okay, that ends it. And then you.
Okay. Sorry. I just answered the phone, I said.
Okay.